I'm gonna call everybody's attention to order. We're gonna get started with our May tenth twenty twenty-three work session. We have a single topic tonight, and that is to hear the results of our residential survey associated with a school referendum.
All right, so as you know, we have Don Lipto here tonight to present the results of that survey. The most recent one, the second of our surveys. For you as a board, I did email you the survey slide deck so you could see it up close because we have a TV that is out, or actually a connection that is out. So if you want to see it large screen, on this side, you're gonna have to do a one eighty to see it because Don needs to see where he's at. Otherwise, it is in your email as an attachment right now. So with that, I will turn it over to Don and let him walk through the results.
I have to be looking over this way to see my slide deck, so. All right, well, happy to be back in Hastings and walk through this. And since it's a work session and not a regular board meeting, if you have a question, you don't want to wait until the end, please get my attention. Let me know, and I'd be happy to stop and explain something in more detail. So in terms of the basics of the survey, we ended up with four hundred completed interviews with registered voters living within the boundaries of the school district. To put that in some context, if on the way home, you're listening to public radio or Fox Radio or CNN, and you hear about a national survey that was just completed, the typical size of a national survey runs from twelve hundred to fifteen hundred. So think about three hundred million registered voters, you know, with a survey sample of twelve hundred compared to Hastings at four hundred. So while it doesn't intuitively seem like a very large number, that is a very substantial survey and can provide you with really good information. Interviews were completed in mid to late April. There were twenty-eight questions. Took about seven minutes on the phone. People who are really smart about this stuff say that you should not keep people on the phone much more than ten to twelve minutes for obvious reasons. People, you know, hang up, they won't finish it. So this was well within the recommended length. The margin of error at the bottom is a statistical concept. Since we're looking here at four point nine, it's gonna be easier for you just to round it off to five. And so what that margin of error means is if you see a slide where it says that fifty percent of the people thought the sky is blue, if you add five percent to that, gets you to fifty-five, and you subtract five percent, which gets you to forty-five. There is a ninety-five percent chance that the opinions of everybody in Hastings are in between forty-five and fifty-five. So that's what the statistics are related to margin of error. We did have demographic targets, and on the next slide, when I get to it, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But basically, before we did anything else in Hastings, we purchased a database that had information about all registered voters living within the boundaries of the school district. And we started off the project by essentially counting people. Of all those registered voters, how many are men versus women? How many are eighteen to twenty-four versus over sixty-five? How many are parents versus non-parents? How many always vote? How many never vote? So we counted the registered voter database for everybody. And then, once we had our counts, we established targets. So if, when we did the counting, if we found out that fifty-three percent of registered voters were women, then our goal was to end up with fifty-three percent of the interviews out of that four hundred be with women, and similar for all of the other targets that I referenced. If some, if a group was over or under sampled, they were statistically reweighted to get everything within one percent. And what that means with that sample of four hundred is that the key demographics of that sample of four hundred mirrors the demographics of all registered voters, and that's why we go through that targeting process. So these are the characteristics that were targeted. The top three are self-explanatory. The voting history with that one, what we do is we counted out of the last nine times that registered voters in Hastings had a chance to vote, whether that be school board, governor, city council, president, whatever it was, out of the last nine times, how many times did they actually vote? And then we basically divided, divide them up into three groups, and I'll talk more about those later. And then the geographic area, and I can't remember until I get to the slide if we're talking precincts or wards, but within the geography of the school district, the targets also controlled for where people lived. So if twenty percent of the people lived in Ward One, about twenty percent of the interviews were done with people in Ward One, et cetera. So the main body of the survey was testing for a potential ballot proposal that would increase your operating levy. I think the technical language from the lawyers would probably be revoke and replace, but it's basically to increase the amount of funding that you received per pupil. There was a smaller section that got people's reaction to, what about a technology levy? Well, how would you feel about that? And then there were some, a few general more qualitative questions as well that were tested. So related to the potential increase in the operating levy, we started the interview by reading this statement to them. And I won't read through it, you can look at it as I'm talking. But it's basically telling them that you have an operating levy that must be renewed, or you would lose two point six million dollars, and that the district is also considering the possibility of asking people to increase property taxes to increase the funding from that operating levy, just a little bit about to avoid budget cuts. And so based on what you know today, what do you think? Now, this sometimes is called the uninformed benchmark. And the reason that some statisticians use that terminology is all people have heard and know is what you're seeing on the screen, which isn't a heck of a lot. In this case, we're calling it the initial support. So you're starting off with two-thirds of the folks saying, based on what I know today, I would support that. That's quite good. More commonly, we might see, you know, fifty to fifty-five percent of that initial benchmark. So this is a good place to start. And so now, once we've collected that, you can see the opposition at twenty-two. Then we provide a series of statements that provide the people being interviewed with detail, examples, context, rationale about this potential ballot proposal requesting an increase in your operating levy. And I think I've got two slides that will show you what that looked like. That second bullet is talking about randomizing the list. And what that means is that once people got into the examples in detail, some people heard one question first, and someone else heard it last, and someone else heard something in the middle first, and so they were randomized in order to avoid having people's opinions be affected by, you know, this is the fourth or fifth or eighth or twelfth thing I've heard. So the second statement here, we're basically telling people, I'm gonna tell you a little bit more about this, and we want you to tell, tell us if knowing that would make you more likely or less likely to be supportive. So here's the first of what I think are two slides that will look similar. I'm not gonna read through each of these for you, but I'll talk about the top one as an example. So question ten, continue options for earning college credits. Now, the actual question was longer than that, so this is abbreviated to get it on the slide. So people were asked, if you knew that, some of the money would be used for that purpose, would that make you more likely or less likely to be supportive? And that, is that seventy-six I'm seeing in the orange? The seventy-six is the adding up the positive reactions. So those, that's how, what percentage of people said, if I knew that, I would be much more likely to support it, or somewhat more likely? So it's adding up the two positive reactions. Then the percentage that you're seeing, which I think is fourteen, if I'm seeing right, in the kind of the green, that's adding up the percentage of people who said, if I knew that was how you're gonna use the money, it would make me less supportive or much less supportive. So again, the number in the orange is the total of the positive reactions. The number in that green is the total percentage of the negative reactions. So as you can see on this slide, everything is north of seventy percent, which is good. It's what you would like to see. That number over on the right, I won't spend too much time talking about that, that's just the folks that said, no difference. So here is the second slide with similar information. Again, that number in the orange is the supportive group, and the number in the light green is the negative group. So these are not as high as the previous slide, but they're still all north of sixty percent, which is good. So now we've gone through all of those. Remember, they were done in random order. Then we're gonna come back and say, okay, I've told you a little bit more about this potential operating levy. Tell me again, what do you think? This is called the informed benchmark because people are responding after going through that information on the previous two slides. So over on the right, you're seeing seventy-one. So the good news on this slide is support moved north, which is what you want it to do. The caution on this slide gets back to the margin of error. Because the sixty-five point seven bar overlaps with the seventy-one percent bar, it's not statistically significant. To have it statistically significant, they have to be far enough apart so there's space between those bars, if that makes sense to you. But still, it moved in the right direction, which is a positive. Now, these next slides are taking a look at how different demographic groups responded after they got information. Remembering, there has been no information yet about whether my taxes are, you know, would go up a hundred dollars or a thousand dollars or somewhere in between. This is only showing you how people reacted after they got information. So we start on parent, parent status. Over on the left, parents are parents, that's easy. People who have one or more kids in the Hastings area schools. In the middle are people who said, I have never had a child in the district. And then over on the right are people who said, I don't have any kids in the district now, but I used to have kids in the district. So we're calling those folks alumni parents. So your parent, you know, support is off the chart positive, which is great. And the other two groups, the people who said, I've never had kids in the district, and the kids that I used to have are both positive responses and encouraging responses. Here, we're seeing male, female on the left. Probably made the same statement the last time I was here. Women are always more supportive of everything everywhere, and that's true in Hastings also. We typically, that will be five to ten percent more supportive than males, no matter what you're talking about or what you potentially are asking for. So you had a normal profile there. And on the right, you're seeing how people responded based on their age. This will vary quite a bit from district to district, but I would say that the, you know, the profile that you're seeing there, we're starting highest with the youngest group, and then with the exception, that little blip in the middle, you know, comparatively lower as people are getting older, is a normal profile, as you might expect. Here, we're looking at how people responded based on where they live. And again, what you're looking at is what people said after they had information, but before we talked about taxes. And then on the right, you're seeing support based on past voting activity. So over on the left, less and new are people we interviewed who have voted in zero to two out of the last nine times where they could have voted. Now, caution on that, when you think about that group, that includes people who, for whatever reason, are not engaged and don't vote, and eighteen-year or nineteen-year-olds who maybe have only had one chance to vote. So if I've only had one chance, I'm one out of nine. So it's a combination of new and disengaged voters. So again, that's zero to two out of nine. In the middle, the active is three to five out of nine. And over on the right, the very active is six to nine out of nine. One of the reasons that this is useful and important information is that in a November two oh two-three election, if the board decides to do that, that's gonna be a low turnout election, typically twenty-five to no more than thirty-five percent of registered voters. And in a lower turnout election, the most active voters are disproportionately in the ballot box. Does that make sense? Okay, on this slide, we're looking at support based on household income. I should mention this because you might have noticed it on the other slides. You see numbers at the bottom that are not four hundred, and I said at the beginning, we did four hundred registered voters. With a household income and with educational attainment that's on this, on the right half of this slide, we don't call people up and say, how much do you earn? Or how long did you go to school? Those types of questions don't do well in phone surveys, I think for obvious reasons. So the, the information that we get is from that database I mentioned at the beginning that we purchased for Hastings. So that database has all kinds of demographic information in it about registered voters. But not everybody has every data point. So what that means with that three seventy-seven, for example, is we had income information from three hundred and seventy-seven out of the four hundred that we did, similar to the other ones. So over on the right, you're seeing support based on educational attainment. Again, this, this will vary a lot from district to district, but I would say the profile you're seeing here is the most common one where there's somewhat more support as educational attainment increases. This is homeowner and renter, and this is the only finding in this survey that was a little bit unusual. About ninety percent of the time, we show higher levels of support from renters. I personally think that this one is kind of an anomaly. And when it actually comes time where a vote yes committee is working on something and trying to get people to, you know, support it, I would be looking for every renter I could find. And renters almost always are more likely to support a referendum proposal because they don't connect the dots between a property tax increase, which doesn't affect a renter, and their rent. If the, you know, if the person renting the building doesn't, certainly has the option to pass those along, but most people don't connect the dots, and support levels from renters typically are quite good. So now we're to the third part of the feasibility survey. Remember, we started with that uninformed or initial benchmark, where they just had a little bit to respond to. Then they got like fifteen pieces of information, then we got a second response. Now we're coming back with the third one, which puts it in the context of a potential tax increase. In this survey, similar to your last one, we tested three tax impacts. An average-priced home estimated at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, so one hundred, one fifty, two hundred. Similar to what I talked about earlier, these were also randomly rotated. So if I called your household, you might have heard the two hundred first. Someone else might have heard the, the one fifty first. And similar to what I said before, those are rotated to avoid having the person being interviewed sense that they're being taken up the ladder or down the ladder and have that affect how they respond. So this is what it looked like initially at that one hundred, one fifty, two hundred. And when I see a result like this, I always remind board members that the direction of the line is always what you're seeing everywhere. It's really a matter of where's it start and, you know, where does it end? In your particular case, as you can see, support moves from very strong to very low on a fairly steep line. Sometimes it's, those lines are not so steep, so it just depends. But this is what we ended up with initially. Yeah.
Just so I'm clear, the, sorry, the initial part of the survey was only renewal, right, with no increase, and this is strictly increase?
No.
Or?
The last survey that was done in two thousand twenty-two tested renewal only with no tax increase?
I mean, the first half of this presentation was just renewal, five renewal.
No.
No.
It was, it was a increase, a tax increase for additional.
Okay, so then, so then this is?
And I think what you may be thinking of is that the survey that was done in two thousand twenty-two, we did one test asking people if they would support a renewal only with no tax increase. And that actually came in at like seventy-nine percent support. In this survey, there was no reason to repeat that again because we knew that if the board made that decision, that you would be in a very strong position. So everything we've been talking about so far has been a proposed increase in the operating levy with the associated tax increase.
So all the, the first questions were just in general, how likely are you to support a levy at any cost? And now we're getting into the details?
Now we're getting into the details.
Now we're getting to the link.
The actual numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly right. So, so here's the initial response. Then what we did is we took how people responded to this and disaggregated it and said, okay, this is interesting, but what did people say who always vote? What did people say who get there about half the time? What did people say who hardly ever get there? And that's what you're looking at here. So the, the blue color are the people who pretty much always vote. So as you can see, at the, at the lowest level, they were actually less supportive than the other two groups. Kind of in the middle with that middle number, and then actually were a little better on the higher number. So that's, the blue line is the most active voters. The red line are people who get there about half the time. And the green line are people who rarely vote. So that, that breaks that down in that way. So the lines you're seeing are the actual responses to the survey. The circle graph you're seeing up on the right is the actual breakdown of all registered voters in Hastings in terms of what, what group they fall into, very active, active, or less active. in terms of what, what group they fall into, very active, active, or less active. So I mentioned at the beginning that there were just some brief questions, kind of teasing things a little bit about a capital project levy. When I say capital project levy, that's what the statute calls it. A lot of times, people call it a technology levy more generally. And so we asked people what they thought about that as well. As you can see, there's only four lines there, not a heck of a lot of information. So it's an initial reaction. And it came through quite well, close to two-thirds level support. Remember, on that other circle graph, the vote no size there was twenty-two percent. This one's at twenty-four, so very close. So you probably got the same, same people who are responding that way on, on both. Then we provided just two pieces of information about that technology levy. The first one, as you can see, was comparing Hastings situation to neighboring and comparable school districts. And the second, a little bit more about how a technology levy would benefit students, teachers, and classrooms. So they just responded to those two. Again, the question was, if you knew that, would it make you more likely or less likely to be supportive? And similar to the other graph you looked at, the, the percentage in the orange bar is the people who responded positively to that statement. And in the light green, people who responded negatively to that statement. Now that you've heard a little bit more about that possible technology levy, tell me again, what do you think? So it didn't change much at all. Now, I'm not surprised that it didn't change because unlike the operating levy, where, where, you know, we provided, what was it, fifteen pieces of information about it? Here it was only two things. And so it's not surprising that that wouldn't have been enough to, you know, move the bar much. So now we're looking at demographic differences specifically related now to the technology levy. Here again, parent, non-parent, alumni, parent. Looks very similar to the other one you saw. Male, female, also similar. Age, looks quite a bit like the other one. People get older, the support relatively lower. On the left, you've got your information by ward, township. And on your, the right, you've got the information related to past voting behavior. Again, here, a caution is the lowest level of support was from people most likely to show up and vote. Now, it's still a reasonable level of support, but comparatively speaking. Here you have information on the left related to income. Looks quite similar to the operating. And on the right, you've got information based on educational attainment, also quite similar. Here we have that, what I characterize as an anomaly again. Normally, we would see renters higher than homeowners. After going through the section on the technology, people were asked to react to two statements. And the two statements you're seeing bulleted in the middle of this slide, people were asked, do you strongly agree with that statement? Agree, disagree, or strongly disagree? And here are the two statements, first relating to trusting the district to do what's best for kids. And strong schools are linked to community well-being. So not surprisingly, both statements had very, very strong levels of agreement. What will be more interesting for the board and admin team is you'll get another report soon that will provide you detail. So you'll be able to look and say, well, about that trust thing, what did parents say versus non-parents? What did old people say versus young people? What did people who always vote say versus people who don't, et cetera? And then we also almost always do a tax climate test. We've done this hundreds of times. It's a little bit like checking the consumer confidence that comes out monthly. It's a way to kind of measure the pulse of, or the temperature of people. So the statement was, I would never vote for a tax increase, no matter what the amount or how the money raised would be used. I would never vote for a tax increase. And what we're looking for is what percentage agree with that. And you can see we're at twenty-eight percent. If you see the note at the bottom, the typical range we see is fifteen to twenty-five percent. So you're close to the normal range, a little bit higher. And Peter Leatherman, who I work with at Morris Leatherman, has told me that in the majority of survey work that he's done in the last six to eight months, the tax climate isn't as strong as it was a year ago. Now, three percent is not a big deal, but it's consistent with kind of what we're seeing right now. This compares the tax climate to a survey that was done in two thousand twenty-two with the identical question. And there you can see graphically, rather than looking at numbers, that the, those agreement bars, you know, I agree with that statement or I strongly agree, are a little higher than they were in two thousand twenty-two. So some summary slides of what I've already gone through. On the operating levy, when people got that first paragraph without a lot of detail, no information about taxes, you came in close to two-thirds support. After people got information, it moved to seventy-one, which is good, but it's not statistically significant. The positive impacts of those fifteen or so statements that were on those horizontal graphs that you looked at, the positive impacts ranged from sixty to seventy-six. The ones that were negative, where people said no, ranged from fourteen to twenty. Greatest positive support came from related to offering college credits to high school students and maintaining class sizes. Relatively smaller supports for expanding or avoiding cuts to electives. Highest support demographically came from people eighteen to thirty-four. Voters were kind of in that mid-range. Parents, people with graduate degrees, people with income over one fifty. Relatively lower support, non-parents, voters over sixty-five, residents of Ward Four, and very active voters. At the time of the data collection, overall support levels rise to what we would say would be feasible outside of the margin of error at about a hundred and forty dollars on an average-priced home. So that's basically along that line, taking you to fifty percent plus one, and then giving you the margin of error above that. So you have some margin for error. That's where that one forty comes from. Now, when you look at the one thirty-five in the second bullet, what that's doing is saying, okay, but how, what was the level of support from very active voters compared to other people? And if you remember, the very active were a little lower. So that adjusts it down to one thirty-five for the recommended number that is feasible. Now, your survey in two thousand twenty-two for point of reference ended up with an estimate of a hundred and twenty-five as feasible. So, you know, I would say that's quite close with, with those two surveys. On the technology level, you started at sixty-eight point four, and you, you basically stayed there after people got a little bit of information. On the, on the technology side, the voters eighteen to thirty-four, residents of Ward One, income over one fifty, lowest support, non-parents, voters over sixty-five, residents of Ward Four, and, and very active voters. On the tax side, you had a twenty-eight percent agreeing with the statement that they would not support any tax increase for any reason in any amount, which was, as I mentioned, a little bit higher than last year. Tax aversion in Hastings is a little bit higher. Although opposition to that eighty-dollar number, which was the lowest one you tested, was, was, was low at only twenty-one percent. And that's it for the high-level results of the survey. And again, as I mentioned, you'll be getting more detailed results shortly as well. What questions do you have initially for me?
So just while you're processing some of this stuff, I believe, so a couple things. I believe Ward Four is the most northern ward. If I remember correctly on the map.
So Ward Four is the most, think southwest?
Or south, yep.
Yeah, southwest. And Ward One?
Ward One, think east Hastings. Ward Two, think the President's Edition and everything north of Highway Fifty-Five and west of Vermillion Street. And then Ward Three is around the golf course and that area. Yeah.
And then what Don's referring to is, I'll send you the detailed summary, which is the big packet that has all the detailed information in it. So you can kind of process that next with, with all of that level of information. And then next Wednesday, to follow this up, will be the group from Ellers coming in to talk about the details in the tax impact and on the financial pieces that would go into, so what does this mean for income into the district? If we went with something like this? Income into the district if we went with capital projects at this level? So trying to break that up a little bit so you can digest it in chunks and kind of get your head around this globally. And then we'll give you the details. And then next week, we'll come in with Ellers and do more of the tax implication, financial implication, just that piece, so that it's a little bit, again, more digestible.
One thing I should have mentioned, and then I'll see what other questions you have. I talked about the fact that in your last survey that the estimated feasibility was around a hundred and twenty-five. This time was around a hundred and thirty-five. Did I say that right? Yeah. The, you shouldn't, you know, interpret that as one thirty-five and we win, one thirty-six we lose. It's a, it's a planning guideline. The, you know, if we estimate you're, you have a feasible proposal at one thirty-five, it doesn't mean you can't win at one forty. But it also doesn't mean you can't lose at one, one twenty-five. It's a planning guideline. But I would say, when you think about that and you continue to work with Ellers and look at what that means at different levels, is just to understand that the, while that's not a finite number, the further you go north from that, the thinner the ice likely will become. Does that make sense? And then the other thing, of course, is we collected this information in April. We've got May, June, July, August, September, and October to live through. So what's going to happen with the economy, the stock market, Ukraine, you know, fill in the blank? We don't know if all of the circumstances that we're going to experience in the next six months are going to put you in a much more favorable position in November? About the same or worse? So it's, it's a limitation of the survey that you do it at a moment in time. Does that make sense? What other questions do you have?
So this is, this is not a question, but I just want to share with the rest of the board. Every so often, I have to get my eyes up and look at the endpoint, right? And remember the steps along the way and when we come to a conclusion on this. We are generally targeting our July board meeting, which is the twenty-sixth of July, to be the meeting where we make a decision about a levy referendum, levy renewal, and/or increase, and/or capital, or tech levy. That's that timeline. And that, that's driven by the need to get the language on ballots, right? So we're getting this information today, which is a second checkpoint from our previous survey. We're going to get more information from Ellers. We're going to get some revisions based on legislative outcomes and the associated tax impacts associated with that and just ongoing change. Those are going to be data points. We're going to get them consistently and frequently from now till that July timeframe. So let's just, you know, recognize that that's the range of our decision and when and how we can ask questions. And to, to the same point that Mr. Lipto made is we will decide that in July. And then we will live through August, September, and October. And those will happen after the decision is made and, and whatever that looks like in the economy and whatever our community does and the work effort that happens, should there be, you know, a vote yes campaign, that, that's going to come into that timeframe. And those are things that, that are beyond the data points that we're gathering here. At this time, are there any other questions relevant to the, to the survey? And I think we'd certainly be in a position where you could raise questions with the administration. We could go, they could go gather that data and get answers.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Lipto, what's the, what's the one thing people miss when they hear this presentation that you wish that they didn't miss?
Well, I, I think, I think I would be repeating myself, so I'll be very brief in responding. One is how to interpret that hundred and thirty-five dollar number.
Yeah.
To think that you're going to automatically win at one thirty-five and automatically lose at one thirty-six is not how to use the data. And then secondly, also repeating myself, but just understanding that we collected the data in mid to late April. And there's a lot of water that goes over the dam between now and then. So you do have to just be cognizant of all of that. Between now and Between now and July, we're going to get consumer confidence numbers for June and July will be new information. And so I think you just continue to keep your eyes and ears open and looking at the environment. And hopefully be in a position where you're comfortable making that decision when that date comes in July.
Are we able to get any kind of a feel in July before our meeting as far as what's happened between now and then? Like what you would anticipate? How the, what the impact would be to these service, survey responses at that time? Like, right, like it's going to happen, legislature, legislature and whatnot? Do we get a feel for what your opinion is on, hey, I think, you know, I think the 140 was good now, but probably a lower value would be better, given the current environment in July?
Statistically, no. The only way I could do that in July is to do a survey in July. So statistically, no. Intuitively, you know, I'm looking at the consumer confidence charts every time they come out because I've got multiple clients, you know, planning referenda. And I know that affects how people think about voluntarily raising their taxes. So certainly, you could call me and get my opinion, but it would be intuitive, not statistical.
You raise a really good point, Director Tate. And I wonder too, that, I just wrote a note here that before that meeting, I'm going to definitely take a look at the consumer confidence report and, you know, assuming it's public information, just to get a feel for it before we make a decision. Because I, I mean, this is, this is a big decision to be making and that impacts the entire community.
And I don't want to overemphasize this or sound dark and foreboding, but the resolution of the debt ceiling is going to have a profound impact on the stock market. You don't have to be a rocket scientist to know that. So that, that's just one example of stuff that is out there that we'll have to be aware of.
Thank you very, very much for your time and your presentation.
Help you and good luck with your planning. And if you end up with a half a dozen questions later, just funnel them through to the superintendent and he'll get them to me. Okay, thank you.
I think that this is for you, Dr. McDowell. Where does this report live? So the, the report that was given tonight is, if it hasn't been already, will be, will be put up on Board Book. You all have a copy of the report. It goes onto Board Book, it's out there now. And then you, as board members, I just sent you the summary sheet that has the detail in it so that you can, you know, after tonight, look through it at your convenience and kind of make sense of what Don Lipto was talking about with those detailed pieces. So, but continue those types of questions for sure because that's what myself and Jen Seward are trying to do, is stage this for you in a way that doesn't become overwhelming, so that by the time you do get to July, I would say before you get to July, you will have a good idea of kind of what you're thinking you want to do with whatever.
All right, so that was our singular topic for tonight's work session. Dr. McDowell already alluded to the fact that we have an additional work session next week where we'll hear our budget or the, I'm sorry, I don't have it up in front of me, the tax impacts from Ellers. And we'll have opportunity to respond, you know, consider responses to innovation teams in the LCP. So that was a chance to just reconsider that as a board. And then we're coming to the conclusion of that four months with not having requests for future topics on the agenda. So we'll revisit those three topics. That's what's on the work session on the 17th, as it stands right now. My, we had previously had a closed meeting scheduled, probably still in your Google Calendar, to have a second conversation about contractual parameters. Given the current situation with regard to the legislature, which is, you know, things are still in conference committee, we're not in a position for that to be a very valuable conversation. And we don't want to misuse anybody's time, so we're not going to host that closed session at this time, at that time. So it'll just be a slightly longer work session.
What was the date on it?
The 17th, and it's already on people's Google Calendar. So it's already been, invitation's out on the 17th. So we'll bring this to conclusion, turn everybody's mic off. And Ms. Garcia is setting us up. We're going to reconvene at 7 o'clock for our special board meeting. I have too many tabs open. That, that'll be our special meeting where we will work specifically on identifying finalists for the first round of interviews on our superintendent selection. Okay, so we've got about five minutes to break and reset your brains. We have a little bit of light snacks over here if anybody needs to stay energized. All righty, thank you. See everybody in five minutes.